The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Ballmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Coan, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson. Did she say? President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Williamson. Twenty-four, present.
I call on being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries, he's able to stand, please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We'll spend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, and move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar, intending second on the motion, second about Alderman from the twentieth, out. Alderwoman from the sixth, and Alderwoman from the sixteenth, would you like to approach the dais?
Little Bit Foundation is committed to helping disadvantaged schoolchildren by creating a positive impact for personal growth, increasing self-esteem, encouraging a more focused and active learning environment. They do this by building strong relationships and working closely with the St. Louis City Public Schools. The Little Bit Foundation was founded in 2001 by a simple request of an inner-city schoolteacher asking for coats for her students. This simple request has now become a movement, and to date, the Little Bit Foundation has served 28,000 children. This year, they are serving 5,000 children in 17 schools, and strives toward a goal of serving an additional 600 to 1,000 children annually. The Little Bit Foundation recognizes that in order to effectively break down barriers that prevent impoverished children from learning and succeeding, they must identify specific needs and serve the whole child. With their strong community outreach, they have developed affiliations to build nine individualized wraparound services. Services include behavioral health support, general health screening, eye exams, basic needs for children, coats, shoes, and uniforms. The collective impact of their programs and services positively affects the children's dignity, self-esteem, and significantly improves their ability to learn. So I would ask for you to join me in welcoming the Little Bit Foundation here today and congratulating them for their work. I want to say something very quickly, because what happened was, it was just a week ago, and a former person who worked with me at a nonprofit had gone to the Little Bit Foundation. So I went down to visit the Little Bit Foundation. And when I walked in there, I was shocked at the warehouse. For 10 years, I have kept this picture in my office at my house. And what it is, is from 1946. And it shows a little boy, six-years-old, who's getting his first new pair of shoes. And he is elated, because he's never owned new shoes. When I walked into the Little Bit Foundation warehouse, and I saw brand-new shoes stacked to the ceiling, and I saw they were all donated by someone who owns a very big shoe company, Sela, I almost wanted to cry, because it brought me back to what I've always known, which is when you give dignity to children, when you give them the tools they need, they will succeed. And when Little Bit Foundation originally started in the city of St. Louis, they were told, "No, we don't want your services, you can move on." And you know what? They knew the children needed them. And so here we are, this many years forward, and there are children out there, not only in the city of St. Louis, public schools, but in the county, who get brand-new shoes, brand-new clothes, brand-new backpacks. They get their dignity, and they get to be able to learn. So I am very honored to stand here before a woman who's about to speak to you, that when she was told, "No," it wasn't "No," it was, "I'll figure out a way to do this." This is the Executive Director, Rose.
Ann Lee.
Ann Lee, sorry.
I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. And that's exactly right. I appreciate that story, because at the beginning, we were told, "No," and we would go undercover. But now, we're out in front, and we're in front of you, and I'm here to ask for your help, because we have over 40 schools on our waitlist. And with your help and your support, we can take care of that many more children. There's nothing stopping us. We can make a difference. So let me just speak to the significant difference that we are making already in those children served. When Little Bit is in a school, we see a rise in attendance, and immediately, we see discipline problems go down, right away, because everybody has what they need, and they can focus on education. There's one other thing I want to mention. We just launched a behavioral health program this year, and we launched it in two of our schools. One is Herzog, which is a city school, and the other's at Jennings School. This program will be long-term success for the children in the program. They can work through their program, so they can be productive adults, they can receive an education. I'm here to ask you to help us grow this program in all of the schools that we serve. We need your support. We need your help. If you'd like to learn more, we're located in the Marcone Building on 40 and Jefferson. Please come for a tour. Come with us and see how Little Bit works, one-on-one with each child. It's all about the child's dignity, it's all about building them up for their future. So again, thank you so much for your help, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you, and it is a pure joy and pleasure to work with these children. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would just like to attest to the fact of what Little Bit does for schools in our community. They currently serve Wildbridge Elementary, which is in Alderman Carter's Ward, and this is a school that has the highest incidence of lead poisoning in the entire state. Their numbers academically are ranked one from the bottom in the whole state. But when you come into that school, and you see Little Bits there that are providing kids with uniforms, providing them with coats and backpacks and shoes, that's a profound statement. I mean, this school is housed in an area that, in this city, it has the name of Murderville. So it just shows you how important it is to support what you all are doing, and however I can be of help through Bertha Gilkey Knox Foundation, which is called Alliance of Parents and Children for Educational Empowerment, which I've been working with for the last six months. However I can help, I will, because I know firsthand what you all do for the kids in our communities. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Further discussion. I move that, I'd like to make a motion to make this resolution, courtesy resolution, and bank, a number of people have asked that. So, open it up for a motion. Anybody like to, would you like to make? Been moved by Alderwoman from the fourteenth, second about Alderman from the ninth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please prepare another copy of that resolution in bank. Also, I want to say to the Little Bit Foundation, to Rose and the other members of the foundation, thank you, thank you for all your work, it's making a difference in kids' lives, and like Alderwoman from the sixth and the sixteenth talked about, it's those little things that will make a difference in the child's life, to prepare them for school. So if you have not been a kid and have to go to school with not a good pair of shoes, in some cases, shoes that have been handed down through some of your older brothers and sisters, it makes a difference when you have those things, and it helps lift their confidence. So, thank you for your work. There's Rose, oh, there you are. And this resolution, the resolution that we're giving you today is the highest honor this board has to give. And what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions on behalf of the citizens of the city of St. Louis up until this point in time. So 100 or 200 years from now, when they research the records of the city, they will be able to read about this day, and understand that we paused in our deliberations this day to recognize the Little Bit Foundation for its many contributions. So congratulations, and continue your good work throughout our community. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Turn to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guests, any introduction of our guests. Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Gary Otten from Painters District Council II, Jeff Hans from the Carpenters Union, and in absentia, Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local 73.
All right. All right. All right. Mr. President, members of the Board, I would like to have as my special guest Mike Grady from Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 562, and David Holmes from the St. Louis Labor Club. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome back Rhonda Smythe from Trinnet, and introduce their still pretty new Executive Director Ralph with a PF Fremmer on my left.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to recognize as my special guest this morning, former Board of Aldermen staff person, and, I should say, president of the Board of Aldermen staff person, and 28th Ward constituent Pam Ross.
Alderman from the twentieth.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I don't know if someone else was intending to do this, but were graced this morning by Senator Jamila Nashi from the state of Missouri, who's over here.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Maureen McDonald from the St. Louis Association of Realtors.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to recognize a former 19th Ward resident and minority business owner, Sean Carr. I watched him start his business from a little bit of nothing, sacrificed with his family, and he's moving forward, and I just wanted to wish him well. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-first.
I'd also like to recognize Missouri State Senator Jamila Nashi, and also from the Carpenters District Council, Keith Taylor, Todd Haykey, and Jeff Hans.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have two honored guests this morning, Mr. Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T, and former State Representative Yappa Elameen.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from twelve.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest today, Ms. Rachel Smith from the Circuit Attorney's Office, and also our license collector, Ms. Mavis Thompson. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to have as my special guest today, Mr. Anthony Lancia with AGC.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the sixteen.
I'm sorry, I missed someone. I wanted to make sure I introduced Robin Wobbie of the Mayor's Office, who's here with us today.
Also, I want to introduce my son, Max, hey, Max, stand up. Come on up here with Max, real quick. Max is 14-years-old, and I looked at him, I said, "Man, I don't think I was that tall when I was 14," because he's almost taller than me already. But thanks for joining us today, Max. Max has been interning with us since he was five, and every time he has a day off school, he comes down and intern. Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest, Ms. Ollie Stewart and her contingency of seniors that she is going to be bringing down to the Board to keep a watchful eye on us.
Yes, thank you. My committee woman and good friend, thank you so much, Ms. Stewart and all of the seniors. It makes a difference having you here. Any, Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you. I also wanted to recognize as my special guest, former Comptroller, Vervis Jones.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. As we gather here on the double holiday weekend of Super Bowl Sunday and Groundhog Day, today we will celebrate National Croissant Day, where you are supposed to eat as many croissants as you can, and I'm happy to have their spokesperson, the Alderman from the twenty-third, Mr. Vaccaro here today, thank you.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you're recognized on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for the approval of the January 16th, 2015 minutes.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Reporter city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda, and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes. I have from as honor the Mayor the following car respondents, dear members of the Board. I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Central West End Business Community Improvement District, the appointment of Bill Durbin, a business and property owner located in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire on July the first, 2016. The reappointment of Pete Rothschild, a business and property owner in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire on July the first, 2018. The reappointment of Derek Gamblin, a business owner in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire on July the first, 2018. The reappointment of Aaron Titlebaum, a business owner in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire on July the first, 2018. On behalf of the Central West End Business Community Improvement District, I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, these appointments sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, you're recognized on Mayor's appointment to the Central West End Business Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for unanimous consent.
Been moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twentieth, that we adopt the Mayor's approval to the Central West End Community Improvement District, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the St. Louis Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission, the appointment of Bill Seedhoff, a resident of the 7th Ward, and whose term will expire on October the first, 2017. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you're recognized on the Mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission, Mr. Bill Seedoff.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for the adoption of Bill Seedoff to the St. Louis Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission.
Moved by Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the twentieth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
Dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our former counters? Would anyone like to take any bills, any of our former counters? Dispense with line items eight through 10, first reading resolutions, for board bills.
Board Bill 265, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, and ordinance relating to delinquent payments and associated fees, repealing ordinance 52783, codified as 8.06.080 of the revised code of the city and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 266, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, and ordinance relating to penalties for delinquency and filing required documents with the license collector, and removing the maximum fine of 25 percent, repealing ordinance 54982, codified as 8.06.090 of the revised code of the city and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 267, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordinance establishing a stop site for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Parnell at sublet and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 268, sponsored by Alderwoman Crewson, and ordinance adopting and approving the petition, to amend the petition to establish the Central West End Business Community Improvement District to add property to the Central West End Business Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 269, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan redevelopment area redevelopment project, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and ROL Capital III Incorporated, designating ROL Capital III Incorporated as a developer of the redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 270, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as the Union Station Phase Two Redevelopment Area pursuant to the Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, establishing the Union Station Phase Two Special Allocation Fund, authorizing certain actions by city officials and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 271, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $18,500,000 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for the Union Station Phase Two Redevelopment Project and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bills 265 and 266 to Ways and Means.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 267, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 265, 266, and 268, and to the Housing Committee, Board Bill 269, 270, and 271, that's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
Following board bills were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 250, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving the petition of various owners of certain real property to establish the Community Improvement District, establishing the 2350 South Grand Community Improvement District, and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Parks Committee, Board Bill 264, sponsored by Alderwoman Crewson, and ordinance authorizing the city to execute a cooperation agreement to amend in part the agreement incorporated into ordinance 69737, and allowing for the city, the Great Rivers Greenway District, and the City Arch River 2015 Foundation, to provide procedures for their cooperation in the design, completion, and ongoing operation, care, and maintenance of city blocks 114 and 131, and containing a severability clause, a governance clause, and an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Housing Committee, Board Bill 210, sponsored by Alderwoman Green, and ordinance amending ordinance 69758 by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement for the 3637 North Utah Place Redevelopment Area. Board Bill 211, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2329 through 51 Market Street, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 240, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 4135 through 37 Shaw. Board Bill 248, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 851 through 859 Goodfellow, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 259, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing the execution of First Amendment to amend and restated redevelopment agreement by and between the city and north side regeneration and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 263, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard and Alderman Bosley, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the Cash Jefferson Parnell Montgomery Street, North 22nd Street redevelopment area. The following board bill was reported out of the Public Employees Committee meeting, Board Bill 189, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and President Reed, and ordinance recommended by the Civil Service Commission pertaining to applicants seeking employment with the city in positions under the classified service plan finding that services in the U.S. Armed Forces is meritorious, adding new provisions that establish a military veteran hiring preference system, containing definition, scoring system, and a documentation requirement. The following board bills were reported out of the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 212, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4056 Russell, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 213, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2112 Sidney. Board Bill 223, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 2613 through 17 Marcus. Board Bill 224, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3318 Wisconsin, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 234, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1956 Wyoming, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 236, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5528 Botanical, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 237, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5435 Elizabeth, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 239, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2350 South Grand, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 243, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2413 South 10th Street, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 253, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3219 Regal Place, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 254, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3923 Cleveland Avenue, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 255, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2640 Arsenal Street, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 257, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4448 Oakland Avenue, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 258, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1917 Rutgers, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 261, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 5519 Botanical, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 262, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5532 Magnolia, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispensal line item fourteen, Madam Clerk, please move Board Bills 244 and 249 to the regular perfection count, and Board Bills, perfection consent count.
So noted. Board Bill 191, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance authorizing and directing the street commissioners to honorarily designate Walton as Reverend Melvin Smotherson Avenue. Board Bill 193, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance authorizing and directing the street commissioners to designate Goodfellow between Enright and Delmar as Reverend Tommy C. Ringo Boulevard. Board Bill 226, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing 2015 St. Louis Works and 5050 Side Rock Program appropriating $5,500,000 from the Street Improvement Fund, containing the Mayor's executive orders, contract advertising statutes, and a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 245, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the excess portion of Holly at the western line of excess portion of Holly at the western line of Grand adjacent to city block. Board bill two forty-six, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the sixty-foot portion of Wise between King's Highway and Brother Thornton Way abutting forty-nine forty-eight through fifty and lots fifty-seven and fifty-eight in city block fifty-five ninety-two, a two-hundred-and-ten point oh-one foot portion of the east-west alley in city block thirty-nine ninety-six abutting forty-nine thirty-six through fifty Wise bounded by Wise, King's Highway, Manchester, and Hereford. Board bill two forty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service additionally vacate travel in Parkview Place from Euclid to King's Highway. Board bill two fifty-one, sponsored by Alderman Howard and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the western north-south alley in city block fifty-six fifty-three beginning at Delore and continuing to the east-west alley and both bounded by Delore, Atkins, Walsh, and Morgan Ford. Board bill one thirty-three, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance pertaining to Tilly's Corner located at thirteen forty-five through fifty-five North Garrison at Sheraton, having as the subject matter the designation of property as a landmark containing definitions, landmark standards, and a severability clause. Board bill one thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance pertaining to New Age Federal Savings and Loan Building located at fourteen oh-one North King's Highway, having as a subject matter the designation of the property as a city landmark containing definitions, landmark standards, and a severability clause. Board bill two fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and repealing ordinance six eight nine four three and enacting a new ordinance confirming prohibition of the issuance of any package liquor license for any premises within the boundaries of the twenty-fourth Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. Board bill two twenty, sponsored by Alderman Green and ordinance confirming the prohibition of the issuance of any package or liquor license for any premises within the boundaries of the fifteenth Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for the adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board bill two forty-one, sponsored by Alderman Davis and-
Two thirty-one. Two thirty-one.
Board bill two thirty-one, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and establishing a multi-year public works and improvement program at Lambert Airport and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number two thirty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I request approval for board bill two thirty-one.
Move by Alderman from the nineteenth, entertain the second. Second by Alderman from the twelfth. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you. Board bill two thirty-one, as stated, is coming from the Airport Commission, asking for improvement rights on a project that they're working on to pass out of committee, and I renew my emotion.
Any further discussion? There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracchia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnoldwith. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmid. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vocaro. Alderman Ogilvy.
Thank you.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Cruisin. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman French. Alderman Williamson. Twenty-five aye votes, one no vote.
Aye vote, stay in motion. Alderman from the nineteenth and perfected board bill number two thirty-one.
Thank you. Board bill two thirty-three, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the director of airports and the controller to enter into and execute two automated teller-machine concession agreements at Lambert Airport between the city and the following concessionaires, Bank of America and Cardtronics, granting to each concessionaire the right, license, and privilege to operate a non-exclusive ATM concession containing a severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number two thirty-three.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for perfection of board bill two thirty-three.
Move by Alderman from the nineteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? No discussion. Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize, close.
I'd like to renew my motion for board bill two thirty-three.
Is there a request for previous roll? There's been a request for previous roll. Motion carries.
Board bill two forty-one, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing and directing the issuance by the city of its airport revenue refunding bond series two thousand and fifteen in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty million dollars to effect the refunding of all or a portion of the city's outstanding airport revenue refunding bonds series two thousand and five and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number two forty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I ask for perfection of board bill two forty-one.
Move by Alderman from the nineteenth, entertain the second. Second by Alderman from the twenty-third. There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you.
Board bill one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cruisin, Alderman Green, Alderman Cone, Alderman Ingracchia, Alderman Howard, and Alderman Carter and ordinance repealing ordinance six eight six six three and elude thereof enacting a new ordinance relating to a complete streets policy stating guiding principles and practices so that transportation improvements are planned, designed, and constructed to encourage walking, bicycling, and transit use while promoting safe operations for all users.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we perfect board bill one ninety-eight, committee substitute.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, second by Alderman from the fourteenth. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you. So this bill updates the city's complete streets policy. We've had a complete streets policy since two thousand and ten, and this just adds some more language and reworks a few things. And so let me talk about those things. We all know that sometime in the nineteen nineties, a lot of cities started to say, hey, what are we doing with all these public works projects? It seems like we're only paying attention to cars. We're no longer planning or building for people, for people on foot, for the elderly. Why can't I get out of my neighborhood, why can't I walk out of my neighborhood anymore? There's a highway there. So we had to rethink cities all across the country, had to start rethinking how we plan and deliver public works projects. And what does complete streets mean? You know, it's just a convenient term that says we need to consider all users when we're investing and maintaining our rights of way. And so what this bill does is maybe three important things. And first of all, I'll just also express my appreciation for the Streets Department, BPS, Office of the Disabled, the Health Department for providing, I think, some valuable input on this bill, and we were able to incorporate some of the language they thought was useful. So first thing we're doing is we're saying explicitly, everybody counts, whether you're on foot, whether you're on a bike, in a car, whether you're a semi-truck driver. We need to think about all modes of transportation when we're spending money in the right of way. Second of all, it creates a complete street steering committee, which is comprised of six city departments. They have to get together periodically, sit down, talk to each other, and figure out the best way to implement this policy across the city. And I think it's good, I think particularly the Health Department had some valuable input. They really want a seat at the table. They're thinking about how do we plan and build a city that is getting older? You know, how do we take care of folks? How do we make sure folks can get around, you know, into their seventies and eighties and make sure we have a safe, welcoming city for everybody? So I'm glad. So they're at the table. They're at the complete streets steering committee table. And third of all, you know, most pertinent to this body is we built in some reporting components so that probably BPS and the complete streets steering committee is going to be delivering information to us who ultimately make a lot of these public work spending decisions about where are the accidents, where are the car accidents, where are the pedestrian accidents, where are the pedestrian fatalities, so that we have better information in front of us that helps, hopefully helps us make better decisions over time. And, you know, this is one of those bills that it's not going to have any effect tomorrow, but we hope in a decade we can look back and say, hey, it helped guide us towards some better decisions and a healthier, ultimately more livable, more appealing city. So with that, I'd ask for my colleagues favorable consideration.
The move by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, second by Alderman from the fourteenth. Alderman from the eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to point out this concept of complete streets. We don't have to wait a decade to see these results, Alderman, is on South Grand between the eighth and the fifteenth ward. We had some phenomenal results incorporating these ideas into redoing the streetscape on South Grand. It makes it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. But really interesting, when you do these things, it also was very, very helpful for the businesses because when the pedestrians feel safe and the bicyclists feel safe, they will patronize those businesses. And within the first year, those businesses saw a seven percent increase in sales, and then this recent year, we had a twelve percent increase in sales. So it's part of a smart growth that you can do for the city of St. Louis, and it's the direction that we're heading, is you've got to make those sidewalks friendly for the pedestrians and the streets friendly for the bikes, and people will come. It works. Drive South Grand, the traffic can get through. It was something that I was a little leery about at first, shutting Grand down to one lane, but the traffic moves and everybody is enjoying it. So you can see immediate benefits, and it's not just for pedestrians and bicyclists, it's for the automobiles and for the surrounding business community because people will come and patronize your businesses. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Add Alderman from the twenty-second to co-sponsor board bill number one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended.
So noted.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize. Alderman from the eighth, add him also. Alderman from the nineteenth, add her also. Alderman, go on once, go on twice. Do you guys want to just do it and bank? I think that'd be easier if we just do this. Would anyone like to make a motion? Well, you need to do it appropriately, and I'll recommend.
Mr. President, I would like to-
Make a motion.
Make a motion that this board bill is in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, second by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Board bill number one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended, is now in bank.
So noted.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth, that we perfect board bill number one ninety-eight, committee substitute as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Board bill two twenty-one, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Vocaro, President Reed, Alderman Conway, Alderman Schmid, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Arnoldwith, Alderman Murphy, and Alderman Green and ordinance pertaining to competitive bidding and composition of workforce and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Please place board bill two twenty-one on the informal calendar.
All right. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Board bill two twenty-one, committee substitute, place it on the informal calendar.
So noted. So noted. Board bill two forty-four, sponsored by Alderman Carter and ordinance directing the director of streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at Emerson on the northeast corner of Emerson and at the southwest corner of Emerson at Lillian and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number two forty-four.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move that we move board bill two forty-four to the informal calendar.
Well, the informal calendar has been passed, so what you'll have to do is just move for perfection of board bill two forty-four.
Oh, the informal calendar.
Yeah, I said informal.
Okay, I thought you meant, I thought you were saying the, move it to the, Madam Clerk, please place board bill two forty-four to the informal calendar, perfection of formal calendar.
So noted. Board bill two forty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Ingracchia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to vacate travel on the east-west alley in city block eighteen fourteen bounded by Shodong, Jefferson, La Salle, and Ohio.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number two forty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to perfect board bill two forty-nine.
Move by Alderman from the sixth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just take a second to talk about this bill because it's relevant to a number of things, I think, that have happened in St. Louis and nearby recently. This is a bill dealing with the construction of a QuickTrip gas station, and QuickTrip, it just so happens, is developing a pattern of demolishing probably viable commercial buildings for gas stations, and then in fact abandoning those gas stations a very short time later and building more gas stations and leaving both the city of St. Louis and nearby municipalities with very difficult to redevelop sites. I've been through this firsthand. In two thousand and eleven, in fact, their QuickTrip was involved in an effort to tear down a two-story National Register eligible building about a block from my house, and I said, you know, there's going to be some real challenges for you guys to do this. And they said, well, we might have to sue you if you don't let us do this. And it turned out that that was a hollow threat. They didn't sue me, and the building is still standing, and there's no gas station there. So my point, my point is that this is just, this is not all that different from some other things, or from some other decisions we've made. I can think of Maplewood made a similar decision, but it is a pattern that I think we need to recognize with this company, that they're almost, I don't know why, but they're almost targeting existing buildings, tearing them down. And of course, we all know we live in a city with, you know, no shortage of vacant land. And so it's just something I think, I think we need to be aware of. If they were, if they were doing something that had a degree of permanence, it might be difficult, or it might be different, but the fact is they also have a pattern of then abandoning these sites, you know, within a decade or fifteen years. So that's, I just wanted, I just wanted to note the pattern. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the sixth, you recognize, close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the committee. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. We perfect board bill number two forty-nine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracchia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnoldwith. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmid. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vocaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman- Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Twenty-one aye votes, four no votes, one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the 6th, and perfected Board Bill number 249.
That's the extent of Board Bill for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 186, 227, 230, 240, 229, Committee Substitute, and 228.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the perfection consent, no, the third reading final passage calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortmann. Alderman Varmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vocaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Conway. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 18th, and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill 187, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance directing the mayor and the comptroller to sell certain real estate located between Branch and Dock Street at number five Branch Street in the St. Louis Port Authority District in as-is condition to Gunther Salt Company and Great Rivers Greenway District containing an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the 2nd, you recognize on the third reading final passage of Board Bill number 187.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for final passage of Board Bill 187, with roll call, please.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 2nd, I entertain the second on the motion, seconded by Alderman from the 14th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortmann. Alderman Varmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vocaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Conway. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Williamson. Twenty-five aye votes, one no vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the 2nd and third read and finally pass Board Bill number 187.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills 186, 187, 227, 230, 229, Committee Substitute, and 228.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session fix his First reading resolutions.
We have none.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miss Lane's unfinished business.
We have none.
Now.
Tuesday Ways and Means Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday Housing Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday Full Board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers, that's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move to excuse the Alderman from the 26th for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, February 6th.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand adjourned.